Here.
Commissioner Lavra.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Chatters.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Unfortunately, planning commission meetings remain remote for the time being. If you are accessing this meeting via phone, please be aware that there is about a 10-second delay on the broadcast and stream. If you wish to download the presentation materials or wish to comment and need to see the visual in real time, please visit everettwa.gov/PlanningCommission. I would like to remind anyone participating to please mute their microphone, or if you are calling in, mute your phone by pressing *6 until called upon. Thank you for your patience and stay tuned for more information about following the city council's lead on returning to in-person meetings. Moving to item two. Do we have an approval of the minutes for December 7, 2021?
This is Commissioner Yanisak. I would move approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Yanisak. Do I have a second?
This is Commissioner Zalinski. I will second the motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Zalinski. Kathy, please take a roll.
Commissioner Chatters.
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn.
Abstain.
Commissioner Lavra.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Yes.
Chair Finch.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think next we are going to skip to agenda item four, and then we'll come back to reports of members and committees.
That would be me then. Good evening. Thank you, Chair Finch. So far, so good in your first term as chair, in your term here as chair. Planning Commission met only two weeks ago, so there's not too much in the way of news from the outside world to report since then in the planning, in the planning arena, although on February 23, the county council did finally adopt the growth targets that we've been following for about a year now. And they adopt them unchanged from the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee's recommendation, which are the numbers that we've been presenting to you and including in our scoping materials for the comprehensive plan update. And they're the same as the ones that we'll have up on the screen here in a moment. I'm reminded that at the last meeting, there was a correction that Commissioner Zalinski suggested to the employment numbers, and I looked a little bit deeper into that today. I wasn't sure if this would come up in the next, in the comprehensive plan scoping briefing in a moment. But I realized what might have been the result of it was a decrease of over 7,000 jobs in the city between 2019 and 2020. And I'm wondering if we may have transposed some numbers there. So the growth targets are adopted for the out year, the 2044 number. And so we actually had a slight decrease in housing when the census recalculated Everett's population from what the State Office of Financial Management had estimated or estimated. Both of those made our job just slightly harder, but we will, we will pick that back up and get back on track, no doubt, here in a few years. The Puget Sound Regional Council's Executive Board also acted to adopt a first-ever for that agency regional housing strategy. There's a link to that in your packets. If you want to go ahead and read it, it's a, it's a good read, not too long, about 15 pages. Fairly consistent with the direction that we've seen in our own Housing Action Plan and some of the other housing action plans, the Snohomish County Heart Process and countywide planning policies. Closer to home for this committee, though, I'd like to introduce, we have two new members of the Planning Commission with us this evening, Demi Chatters and Kevin Ballard. Commissioner Chatters has a background in public administration, business, and law, and comes to us from the Pinehurst Beverly Park neighborhood. And Commissioner Ballard has a background in business, real estate development, and comes to us from Northwest Everett after having lived in several different parts of Everett after a long tenure here. And I'd like to welcome them both and, and offer the opportunity to either of you to say a few words of introduction. I see Commissioner Ballard, maybe?
Yes, I, well, thank you for the opportunity to be on the board and the process. And very humbled to be here, and I hopefully can be a great steward of this commission and helpful to all.
Commissioner Chatters.
Thank you. Yeah, it is an absolute pleasure to be here with all of you this evening, and it's a, it's a pleasure to have the opportunity to serve on this commission. I'm really particularly excited about coming on board during this project of updating the comp plan. I'm just looking forward to listening and learning and working with all of you in facilitating inclusion of community perspectives into this process. This is going to be great. I'm very happy to be here. Thank you.
Great. Some of you may be surprised. We were expecting one new planning commissioner to join us at this meeting, and, and we have two here. We were surprised as well. There was a, a term that had expired for Commissioners Holland and Lark. This, we, is something that we became aware of only last week, and I would like to, this is new to us too, so I don't want to go into details at this point. But I would like to schedule at our next meeting an opportunity to celebrate the two of those commissioners. That is it for my staff comments this evening.
Thank you, Yorick, and welcome Commissioners Ballard and Chatters. Do any of my fellow commissioners have reports? Okay, hearing that, I would like to, to personally thank Commissioner Holland and Commissioner Lark. Now, we can do it again next meeting as well, but I think, you know, Commissioner Holland has dedicated nine years to serving on this planning commission and offered a wealth of knowledge and a demonstrated love for Everett. And I've really appreciated his role to date in the commission, and I hope that he, he returns in the near future. Okay, moving on to the, to the next agenda item, are there any public comments on items not on the agenda? As a reminder, agenda items going forward include a comprehensive plan periodic update scoping, public hearing, as well as a presentation on accessory dwelling units. Any public comments not on the agenda? Okay, moving forward to agenda item number six, comprehensive plan periodic update scoping, public hearing. I'll turn it over to Ms. McCreary and Yorick.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Finch, and welcome new commissioners, and it's great to see all of you tonight. This is our first really public outreach to go out and ask the public in person about what they think about our periodic update, what should we be studying. So we are going to present some basic information about the project, some of the reasons why, and some of the early data that we have. It'll be familiar to commissioners as we've been providing this information now for a little while to you. So with that, I'll get started and share my screen. So as you know, we've branded this project as Everett 2044, planning our future together. We hope that everybody that can participate will. It's a long process, so I'm trying to keep everybody engaged as, as we go through and do our work is really important. Tonight, I'll just give you an introduction to the project. Yorick will present some, some data and information, and then we'll talk about what scoping is and then our next steps. So in terms of the project, we have until June of 2024 to complete this work. That allows us to take some time to really understand what it is we should be studying, getting all the new data. Some of the census data that we're hoping to get early on is going to be coming in a little bit later, but nonetheless, that's, we just had the 2020 census, so that's a very important piece of information. We will move into phase two about mid-2022. And then that's going to be where we start to take all the public comment and develop some growth alternatives that we think should be studied. So really, the bookends of what, how we should grow. And we will be back to the public and the planning commission and council and say, do we have these right before we start our phase three, which is going to be where we have the draft alternatives, and we will do, be doing an environmental analysis on, on those alternatives. So we can figure out how they perform, how will it impact those environmental topics? And, and then that will hopefully lead us to our phase four, where we come up with a preferred alternative, and that will include, it will include updates to policies, it will, comp plan policies, it will include update to development regulations as it might be required. We have to make sure we're consistent with the countywide planning policies, with the Vision 2050, as well as the Department of Commerce has a big checklist for us that we have to go through to make sure that we meet all of those compliance issues in our comp plan. And then finally, we would move this into a formal adoption process that would come to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission then would make a recommendation to the council. And then, as you can see there on the bottom arrow, there's community input and outreach throughout the process. And we are in phase one. So I just want to talk a little bit about defining alternatives, and we'll talk about how scoping is linked to the alternatives. But this is Yorick's part. Go ahead.
Sure. So there, I kind of see the comprehensive plan as having three major components in the update, same thing. We've got the, the verbal policies that help us, help inform us when we have discretion in the permit review world. If there are modifications requested, this will connect a little bit to our next item on accessory dwelling units and, and kind of a qualitative description of how the city should grow and develop and, and what the priorities of your city government should be as we, as we move towards the future. There's a significant component of capital facilities, planning, and financing. I think the transportation world, our water and sewer infrastructure, and, and connections to outside agencies like our school districts and, and other service providers. Then there's a really significant component that is the distribution of growth, and that connects both to those policies and can be guided by those policies. It connects very closely to the comprehensive plan land use map and the other associated maps, the zoning map, the height map, and our street designations. And it has a strong relationship to the capacity that is provided by those, by those development regulations, as well as the actions that the city can take to encourage or discourage growth in different places or different types. So in this, these couple of slides are going to focus on that, the numbers, and this is the core of the alternatives that we will be studying in our environmental review. And I, just to note, this is quite a bit of a recap for most of the planning commissioners of the presentation that we gave just a couple of weeks ago, but we wanted to give some background for any members of the public who are here to address this at this, at this public hearing, as well as, of course, our new planning commissioners. So these are the, the citywide numbers now that we have growth targets in hand, and we have the buildable lands capacity analysis in hand from the county. All of the pieces are in place for us to launch this update just on time. There's still some data to come, such as the State Office of Financial Management's county level forecast and a lot of the really interesting census data that'll be coming both out later this year. But in, in basic terms, right now, we have 110,000 people living in the city of Everett. The existing comprehensive plan growth target, that's out to 2035, is 165,000 people. Significant growth all around. You'll notice that's a theme running through these slides here. You'll see on the right column there, a capacity of 151,000 people. So there's a shortfall for our existing comprehensive plan. That is according to the buildable lands analysis, which is conducted with very defined methodology. But that indicates that we are in a status of needing to take reasonable measures as part of this comprehensive plan update to increase our consistency with the existing growth targets, vis a vis capacity. And then you'll see on the next row down, as we extend the planning period another nine years out to 2044, of course, that comes with an additional increment of growth, although it is not the exactly linear from 2035, so there's only 14,000 more people in that next nine years. And our charge for the periodic update is to develop some alternatives that address that capacity and population. And so that's 179,000 people that our growth target that was just adopted at the county council will need to accommodate and set the stage for achieving within the city. Growth of 69,000 people in the next 24 years, very significant numbers. On the employment side, just as significant, and as I said in my comments earlier, got a little bit bigger of a job just over the last couple of years. It has been a tough pandemic on the economy, and I know Boeing has had some job trimming going on lately as well. That number in 2020, 91,000, was at 99,000 just a couple of years ago. But the economy always swings quickly in, in cycles, and, and this is to be expected. We're talking long-term growth here, not individual years. We do have capacity for our 2035 target in the employment arena, although we do need to create some additional capacity to accommodate the jobs that we are expecting in Everett according to the growth targets. 167,000 jobs in 244 and 179,000 people in 2044. Oh, I don't have control. Next. So on the population side, which, which is the most sensitive to regulation, I think I said this at the last meeting, you can have employment rise and fall with very little in the way of construction permits or other activity at the city level, but housing is pretty sensitive to the regulations and the zoning and all that that we have in place. You can see our existing growth target is that top dashed line going to 2035. The blue haloed line is our growth target to 2044. To hit the next, the right button, Becky. This equates to roughly 20,000 housing units of capacity that we have according to buildable lands within the city right now. And the alternatives that we are working with and the, the alternatives that we are asking for feedback on as part of this scoping process that we're in have different distributions of the 10,000 housing units that we need to create capacity for as part of this periodic update. Next slide. In map form, these are preliminary illustrations. This is our existing housing throughout the city in 2020. You can see big concentrations. Well, you can, I'll let your eyes go to where the concentrations, you see them. And next slide. I think there, this is our buildable lands capacity. So this is the capacity for additional housing growth. You can see some areas are already under development, such as Riverfront. You see a really strong pattern around Evergreen Way, Broadway, and downtown Everett. So almost all of the capacity is along our arterial corridors and within downtown Metro Everett, and not too many purple dots outside of that. I think the next slide has the two maps side by side. Another thing that jumps out to me when looking at this is that a lot of the dots are where, a lot of the purple dots on the right are where there are gaps in the dots on the left. So most of the housing capacity that we have is in parcels that do not currently have housing on them. A lot of them are commercial lots on Evergreen Way. Some of them are vacant lots. There are not too many of those. There are a few areas where there is significant kind of infill and redevelopment of, of existing housing anticipated. But for the most part, it kind of looks like a hole punch with, between the right map and the left map. Next slide is employment. Here is our existing, our existing employment concentrations. Looks like a very similar pattern, other than our, our big concentrations of employment around the colleges and the hospitals. You see a lot of the jobs are along our arterials, Evergreen Way, Everett Mallway, Broadway, and then around downtown. These are the same areas that we're seeing capacity for housing. And if you go to the next slide, Becky, they're also the same areas where we have capacity for additional employment. The Boeing production facility and the Southwest Everett industrial area jumps out as having significant employment capacity. Smith Island does as well. And we're curious to know more about the potential for Smith Island. It's not something that had jumped out to staff as, with some constraints around utilities and floodplain and all that. It's not something that jumped out to staff as having a significant potential for a lot of jobs and growth and development, but we'll look more deeply into that. But I'd say the overall story here is that there's a lot of competition in this capacity for our arterial corridors and for downtown. So those 20,000 units of housing are going to be competing for space with the, with our existing employment, with our employment capacity. And, and I guess it's telling a story of redevelopment along our arterial corridors pretty much from north to south. The next slide. And these are just the two maps side by side. We're all pulling for Boeing here in a big way. And next slide. So these are our, our potential alternatives that we have described in the scoping notice. So our, in this phase, we are asking the public and will be turning to anyone who's here to address the Planning Commission today in the public hearing. Two major questions. What are the major points of emphasis that we should focus on in the update? What is important to you for the city to focus on as part of this update? And then what should our alternatives be? Our next stage after this, we've got some potential alternatives and some general ideas that staff has been thinking. After we hear in this month-long scoping period from, from the public, we will go ahead and take the feedback and turn those into defined alternatives, and then we will study those in an environmental impact statement and come back with whole, a whole bunch of information about how the alternatives perform that can advise staff, planning commission, and the council on what the preferred alternative should be going forward. The potential alternatives are structured in the scoping notice as a no-action alternative that makes very few changes, basically extends the planning period and does not create any new capacity. And then the two action alternatives represent different ways to distribute that 10,000 housing units worth of, worth of capacity that we need to allocate within the city as part of this update. Employment is, we're proposing to have that be consistent between the action alternatives. Regardless of the alternatives, we're going to take all the actions necessary to grow our employment base and, and work on the economic development for the city. For the, on the population side, the housing side, we are proposing on the one side, the concentrated action alternative, which would basically double down on those capacity dots that you saw in purple a couple of slides ago. So where you see a capacity for significant development in Metro Everett and along the arterial frontages and around the light rail stations, we would take the steps necessary to attract even additional growth in those same areas. On the dispersed side, it'll be an opportunity for us to really study and talk about the potential impacts and benefits and costs of a more dispersed pattern for additional housing capacity. And that would involve things like duplexes, triplexes, accessory dwelling units, townhomes, and small apartments scattered more widely throughout the city than just along those arterial corridors. So looking a few blocks off from the arterials, looking into middle housing in existing single-family neighborhoods, and looking closer at our light rail and frequent transit station areas. Think we're going back to Becky.
Yes. So I'll talk a little bit about what the, the scoping is all about, the scoping period. And it's really our first opportunity to go out and talk to the community about what it is that we're charged with doing, how should we grow? And the formality of that is that we've issued a determination of significance under the State and Ball Environmental Policy Act that says we think that the things that we're going to have to propose to accommodate our growth is going to have a significant impact on the environment. So what, what do we need to do to mitigate that? So we will also use this scoping period to shape the project and define really what we talked about, those bookends of what we study. Will, we want to know from the community, what are the areas of emphasis? We already have some defined for us in some of our policy documents that we have to pay attention to. And it includes the elements of the environmental study that we'll study in the environmental impact statement. And then, again, it will help us define the alternatives for how the city wants to grow in going into the future. So right now, the areas of emphasis that we know are that we have actions in the Rethink Housing Action Plan. Many of the commissioners here tonight went through that process with us, and there's a number of short, medium, and long-term actions. And a lot of those, we understood, would feed into this comprehensive plan update process because of the timing that worked out. We know that we're going to have to take, pay attention to that reasonable measures, and that's that shortfall that the buildable land shows that the city has in terms of the capacity to 2035. So we're going to have to address that on some level with the growth capacity. We know that light rail is to be coming up to Everett, probably, hopefully, in the, in this planning period. And so planning for the light rail and transit-oriented development around station areas. Climate change, greenhouse gas emissions is another key emphasis from some of our policy documents, the countywide planning policies, as well as Vision 2050. And then another focus that's even more prominent in this update is the issues of equity, racial disparate impacts, and then the idea of displacement, and displacement comes, in particular, I think it's highlighted around transit-oriented development and light rail as they, as it starts to become real, and even long before that, things can take place that can cause displacement. So that is something we have to address. So under the State Environmental Policy Act, or CIPA- So under the State Environmental Policy Act, or CIPA, these are the elements of the environment that we study when we do an environmental analysis. They're in areas around land use, the shoreline use. We will be needing to do an update of our transportation element and our network. The other public services, such as utilities, need to be studied. And you know, that, Yorick talked about capital facilities. This would tell us, we grow by this much, how many, how much more capacity do we need in our capital facilities? We'll also have the opportunity to take a look at our historic and cultural resources again. And then back to the environmental justice, the equity and the displacement issue will be an environmental issue as well. Then you sort of have the natural environment pieces, which are wildlife habitat, the air quality, water quality, the earth soil and erosion, the energy and climate change, and our beloved parks and recreation. So I wanted to make sure that you all knew that we are going to be conducting some open houses. And unfortunately, we're gonna have to do them virtually again for a little bit longer. But as planning commissioners, we hope that you will let your neighbors know and could maybe participate. Our website for the project is up and running. That's everatwa.gov/2044. So there's all kinds of information and we update it regularly. But March 3rd and March 10th, and those links will be on the website. And with that, we can answer any of the commissioner's questions.
Thank you, Ms. McCrery. And thank you for the detailed presentation and overview. Are there any commissioner questions? Yes, Commissioner Zelensky.
Thank you, Chair Finch. I was just wondering if staff is seeing either in projects that are in the permit pipeline or just in discussions with development community, if they're seeing any interest in multi-use buildings? Given the the situation with capacity along the Evergreen Way and North Broadway arterials. I know we've seen some in the downtown. Are we seeing anything along our corridors in terms of mixed-use buildings where you might have lower floors devoted to retail or service and upper floors devoted to housing?
I will ask, we actually have our land use planning manager here. I was gonna introduce him for the accessory dwelling unit item, but I'll ask Steve Inglesby. But I will preface that first with, I, I don't think so. In the last year or so, I don't think we have any projects ongoing that are vertically mixed use. But I do wanna make sure to note that there's also horizontal mixed use. I mean, we may have a situation where you have buildings side by side, a purely residential building, and then a commercial building next door. But Steve, do you know of any projects that we have ongoing outside of downtown that are vertically mixed use? Oh, you're muted. You're muted.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, nothing jumped out. I can't think of anything where you have a mix other than the project on Rucker and Pacific. But it's, part of it's in the historic overlay. I haven't seen the latest plans on that, so I'm not exactly sure where we're, where they're heading on that project.
We definitely have mixed-use projects, waterfront place, Riverfront are, are projects that have commercial components and residential components, and sometimes even in the same building. But on Evergreen Way and Broadway, none come to mind at the moment.
Yeah, there's been very limited number of projects along Evergreen Way.
Great, thank you. Commissioner McGinn.
Hi, I just had a clarifying question regarding the buildable lands maps. Does that data include underdeveloped land or is it strictly unused unbuilt land?
The buildable lands methodology does definitely vacant land, but it also does assume redevelopment of parcels. And there is a threshold of improvement to land value that I think is the primary measure. So if you have a, a, a structure that is not very valuable in assessed value, which may indicate it's either small or older or something like that. But the land value is very high, that can be a signal that there's potential for redevelopment. There's also partially used. So if there's a large parcel, but only a corner of it is developed and the rest of it is vacant, that's not technically a vacant parcel. But, but, so yes, the buildable lands does assume redevelopment and infill as well as development of vacant land.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And to follow on, Yorick, does the buildable lands methodology, does it take into account separate owners? So if there are multiple parcels adjacent to one another that are underbuilt, if they are owned by different entities, does that methodology assume that they could be assembled for a development project?
No, if they're under common ownership, they are called an economic unit is the technical term for different parcels, but owned by the same person or entity. If they are owned by different people, then no, it would not assume aggregation of those lots and, and into a larger development site. I think that's one of the few ways that the buildable lands methodology can undercount our true capacity a little bit. Because if you're looking at what you can fit on one skinny lot, you can fit a lot more than three times that on three skinny lots if they were aggregated together.
Great, thanks. I, I concur. Commissioner, again, any follow-on questions?
No, thank you.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Chatters.
Thank you. I, I just had a quick question about the elements of the environment to study in the EIS, that list that you, you put up on the screen there. One of the things that jumps out to me about our, our population increase is that we will be seeing a significant increase in seniors as well. Do one of those categories include accessibility? Would that be included with equity? Or is, is there going to be a specific analysis around accessibility in any of these components?
Could you clarify accessibility, transportation accessibility?
Well, accessibility in terms of, well, I mean, just what it means, accessibility transportation-wise, streetscape-wise, in terms of housing that meets the needs for folks that might have accessibility requirements, just the concept of accessibility for those who, you know, have disability issues or those who perhaps are senior citizens and have different requirements for their living spaces than someone who, you know, is a 20-something family with kids.
Yes.
Yes.
Becky, do you wanna go?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, but it's definitely an element that we have to review in, in this update. It's, not mistaken, that it, it's addressed also in the commerce checklist where we've got to make sure that our policies and regulations comply in that way. The other, it is about equity and certainly in the housing arena and the transportation arena, we'll be looking at the housing needs by income level and by any special need. Anything to add to that, Yorick?
Yeah, I'm looking at the scoping notice right now because I think we left housing off this slide, but it is in the scoping notice. We, we came up at the last meeting that how could housing not be in the list of elements of the environment? But I think, yeah, Becky's right. I think these are broad categories. And within that, we would definitely study accessibility under transportation, where that fits in under equity to make sure that there is, I guess, equitable distribution of accessibility. Or put another way, no inequitable concentration of unaccessibility. But yes, thank you for putting a, a fine point on that. And that is a really important piece.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, any additional commission questions? Great. Thank you. This evening is also a public hearing to discuss the, the comprehensive plan periodic update. And I see a number of potential participants, which I'm happy to see. Kathy, would you please provide some instructions?
Thank you, Commissioner Finch. If you would like to speak tonight on the comprehensive plan periodic update and are using MS Teams, use the raise hand feature to let us know you would like to speak and unmute. If you are calling in via phone line, please unmute your phone by selecting star six. When your name is called, please provide your name again and address for the record. When you are done with your comments, please mute your mic or phone line. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anyone interested in speaking to them in this topic? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the agenda item seven, accessory dwelling units.
Great, thank you. Okay, so accessory dwelling units, looking to our planning department's work program and the planning commission's work program for the next couple of years. It's gonna be definitely dominated by the comprehensive plan update. We are gonna put all of our energy into that, probably not have a lot of room for other policy, policy initiatives, I'll say. And part of that is because it's appropriate to include most of the policy initiatives into the comprehensive plan update because then you have the opportunity to study the impact and the cumulative effects of all of the different policy changes that might feature in that comprehensive plan update. There are, there's one exception is code cleanup. Our land use staff, that's the folks who review permit applications and development applications, have identified a number of, of corrections and clarifications and all of that related to rethink zoning. And over the next couple of years, you'll see a series of relatively minor, in a policy sense, ordinances that will clean up and clarify code. But where does that leave with some of the other actions in our recent rethink housing action plan that were identified as high priorities? And one of those in the short-term list of actions was accessory dwelling units. There is a lot of energy around that topic this year and in recent years. I think it's a, it's a popular form of infill development. It's seen as gentle density and a way to achieve some of our housing goals with, while maintaining a lot of the important pieces of character in established neighborhoods. This is also an area that the state legislature has been doing a lot of work on. And there is a bill this year, House Bill 1660, that is nearing the finish line. And I think I would actually give it a pretty good chance of passing this year. There have been a number of accessory dwelling unit-related bills at the state level that have come very close or have passed that have served to reduce regulations throughout the state at a state level. And we just wanted, we're thinking about getting ahead of some of those, some of those requirements that may be coming down from the state level as well as implementing an action of our housing action plan. And accessory dwelling units seem to fit the bill in a couple of different ways. So we wanted to bring you an item at, at today's meeting. This is a briefing and a discussion. We do not have any particular ordinance. We've not decided on a recommendation for any changes to be made, but we wanted to lay some of the groundwork, talk a little bit about the existing regulations we have. And then hear from some of our planners who are working on the development review and have, have reviewed several of these accessory dwelling unit applications and have seen some room for improvement in our code and seen some projects that worked well and, and maybe some that might have worked well, but for an obstacle in our development regulations. And so we wanted to bring this item to you. So this is where I was gonna introduce Steve Inglesby, but you already got to see him in the last item. But I will, I am happy to introduce Kelsey Hyde, who's a member of our planning staff, a planner in our land use team, reviews applications. One of the six hard-working staff members that, that keep the permits come, going out the door as fast as they come in and know a ton about the inner workings of our development code. And very happy to have both of you here. I think Becky is gonna lead off the, lead off the item. And we've got some slide on accessory dwelling units. And look forward to a good discussion with the planning commission after we give a little bit of background here.
And thank you again. And yes, it's exciting to have Steve and Kelsey here to walk us through what's been happening on the ground. So just a little bit, again, laying the foundation about what an accessory dwelling unit is. And it's, it's a dwelling that's located in our code on the same lot as, as a single-family housing unit, a duplex, or a townhome. It can be attached to the principal residence, or it can be detached. In single-family zones, one of the requirements is that one of the units must be owner-occupied. In other words, the property owner needs to occupy one of the structures. So a little bit of policy guidance about, that we have in our, a number of our documents. But in our comprehensive plan specifically, we have an objective of wanting to provide a wide range of housing because different people have different housing needs, trying to promote housing alternatives to the large, single-family detached dwellings and the large footprint apartment houses. And we sometimes refer to that as our, our middle housing. We wanna also, though, protect existing single-family neighborhoods from substantial change such as rezoning to multifamily. But there's a, a way to do that, increasing capacity, where you do it in more of a a transitional way, while making sure that you're preserving the characters, of character of the neighborhoods. So with all that said, it is to promote a wide variety of choices for safe and decent housing for all, promoting the housing alternatives, which this does, and accommodate well-designed infill housing that protect the character of the neighborhood. So. So some of the action plans that have been around here for a little while, the rethink housing action plan, and I'll go over the specifics of that action related to ADUs. So I will try to say accessory dwelling units, but I will probably say ADUs a number of times. As Yorick had mentioned, the PSRC just adopted a regional housing strategy. And there is a call for jurisdictions to take a look at how they can provide some of the, that, that middle housing, some of that infill housing, different housing types for, for all folks. And some of you might be familiar with the Snohomish County Housing Affordability Regional Task Force, which is made up of elected officials from Snohomish County jurisdictions that came together and created a housing action plan a couple of years ago. I believe it is right before COVID. So we had momentum as we finished that plan. And then now it's starting back up again. But, but that also calls for taking a look at different housing choices and specifically ADUs, because they can serve a number of functions in the community. And then the reasonable measures that we're gonna have to go through in terms of that shortfall in capacity for 2035, that is one of the measures that, that jurisdictions can do. And that is that infill and those accessory dwelling units. So the specifics of the rethink housing action plan, so right, that first action 1.1 was to promote accessory dwelling unit development through changes to regulations and processes. And so when we went through that, we came up with a list of potential changes. And these are some of the, maybe the- potential changes. These are some of the, maybe the barriers to getting more accessory dwelling units in the community. And that would be to remove the owner occupancy requirement. That is something that's been talked about before, and there's people on both sides of that issue, but the state has taken that issue up a few times, although it hasn't passed anything yet. So we'll see where the state legislature ends on that. We've seen a couple of examples of providing free model-based plans for folks so that they basically have a, a plan that's architecturally sound and is what I would call pre-approved. There might be some changes in terms of how it fits on an individual lot, because all the lots are primarily different. But that would streamline the process, and it would also be very cost effective for a property owner to, to use that project. Yorick, is it Renton? Renton that just initiated that program and I'm I think it'd be great for us to call and find out how it's going. Yeah.
Los Angeles too, we want to put some palm trees in our example. They just adopted, they had a design competition and nineteen different plans were selected by local architects and they, they're not going to fit our, our climate or our development pattern here at all, but it was a good example of a process that delivered some really great designs that folks can now take off the shelf and not have to spend extra resources on custom design.
Couple of other things would be to waive lot coverage restrictions. The units themselves are generally very small, so do they have an impact or is, is it something that we can look at eliminating or reducing for that purpose? And always, you know, cost can be important, so taking a look again at fee waivers, potential fee waivers. So the, the action also says we might just want to study the studied the constraints with the permits that we've gotten now, and I think though our land use staff has used it over the rethink housing, excuse me, rethink zoning code now for a while, and I think we're seeing probably the wide range of, of obstacles just in trying to get some of them permitted. So the history, prior to rethink zoning in 2017, the city did update its ADU regulations to allow the detached accessory units. Prior to that, it was only, they only allowed attached. The unit size was limited to eight hundred square feet or seventy-five percent of the square footage of a principal residence. In the rethink zoning ordinance, the definitions for accessory dwelling units was sort of broadened, simplified. The all regulations also increased the unit size, so it's up to a thousand square feet now. And it also allowed it in multifamily and commercial zones. And an example of a commercial zone would be as if there was an existing home there. And they wanted to put a, an accessory unit, you know, it's probably something that was non-conforming or maybe conforming, but probably not a lot of cases where that would be something that somebody would do. So just wanted to let you know in terms of where ADUs are allowed in the residential zones, so everything you'd see there in, in the yellows and the browns, which are the single family and the multifamily zones. And then, as I mentioned, now ADUs are allowed in the these commercial zones. They are not however allowed in the mixed urban zones, which is primarily downtown and heavy industrial. So I'm gonna quickly go through the regulations. We did provide you kind of the full range of regulations in your packet, but just for context here, because you'll hear about some of the obstacles that, that we're, we're facing, but so in the single family zones, they've got to be twenty feet from the front. And then in, on the rear, if there's an alley, there's no setback, so it could go all the way to the alley. If there's no alley, again, there's another, there's a twenty foot setback from the backyard. And then the five feet is a, a typical setback, side setback. And then if you happen to be on a corner lot or a side street, then you would need to have an additional ten feet there. I should mention that note, that asterisk there, if there's no alley, it can be five feet if the unit is equal to or less than eighteen feet high. So if you want it higher than that, and we'll talk about heights in just a second, you can go down to five feet, but you have to keep your unit to eighteen feet. In multifamily zones, it's, it's similar. There is in the historic overlay, we want to do a twenty foot setback in the front as well as the UR three, where the UR four in is only ten feet. And again, we have the alley and no alley. There you can see the zero or twenty. And that relates again back to the eighteen feet, five feet if there's, if it's eighteen feet high. And twenty feet in urban residential with no alley if it's a budding resident, a single family residential zone. And then your side yard setbacks and then the street side yard setbacks and the UR three, remember we just changed the, that five foot if, if you're in metro, you don't have that setback. So height gets a little more complicated, so I won't spend a lot of time on this, but just to let you know, and I think Steve and Kelsey will share that too, some height things, but if you're an alley lot and you're gonna do a six twelve pitch roof or greater, you can have up to two floors, which is twenty-four feet at the max. If you're less than that six twelve pitched roof, then you can have one and a half floors, and that can be up to an eighteen foot maximum, and that's just here diagram showing what that pitch means. For non-alley lots, all roof types are one and a half floors up to eighteen feet, and this is in single family zones. Oh, this is a slide with a lot of info, but this has to do with, this has to do with the size of the building. So again, a thousand square feet or, and this, this is in primarily single family zones. Or it can be fifteen percent of the lot area and the principal building footprint. The lesser, so whatever's less. If that's one unit on the property, if this is a property that has more than one, between two and three principal units on the lot, then it's a little more complicated about how you figure that out. But again, the lesser of thousand square feet or whatever the seven point five percent of the lot area is, so it would have to be a pretty good sized lot or and then thirty-seven point five percent of the principal building footprint. But it must be a minimum of four hundred and forty square feet. So you see the zones listed in, in there that that applies to. And then in terms of the commercial zones and the multifamily zones, except for in the historic overlay area, there is no size limit on the accessory unit. And then this is just lot coverage. So this is, one of the recommendations is taking a look at the lot coverage and seeing if those are maybe more restrictive than they need to be. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve, and this, we're gonna give you some update on what we've seen in terms of permit activity and just let me know when you need to advance the slide.
Well, thank you, Becky. So since adoption of the new code back in December twenty twenty, there's been seventeen approved ADUs, of which eleven are detached and six are attached in a variety of areas on the city. So the map on the left shows the location of those that have been approved and gives some details about those approvals on the column down below on the left-hand side of the map, or the bottom side of the map. Anyways, the floor areas range from five hundred and seventy square feet to a thousand. And the lot areas range from six thousand to twenty-eight thousand five hundred square feet. Next slide.
Sorry, Steve, not, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I, one observation that I could not help but notice is that there is not a single one south of SR five twenty-six, the Boeing there. There's fewer yellow zones down there that are most amenable to accessory dwelling units, but still, I'm curious what the story is and I'm, I'm, will at least look into why that might be.
Yeah, good observation. I'm, I'm not sure exactly why that would be the case. Because there are some larger single family lots south of five twenty-six. So first example we have, I will pass over to Kelsey. I think she'll take the next two properties.
All right, thanks, Steve. So this is a property located at seventeen eighteen Pine Street. And there is an example of a recently constructed detached ADU on the lot. Becky, do you want to advance the slide? So as of the date of this presentation, the unit itself has been constructed. It included both an accessory dwelling unit and a small, single car garage. The unit was designed so that it would match the siding materials and the roof pitch of the principal unit. And no modifications were required or requested for this particular proposal. Becky, do you want to go to the next slide? So here's an example of the principal house located at the front of the property and the detached accessory dwelling unit that was recently constructed immediately off of the alleyway. Next slide. So this project is located at eighteen eighteen Holbrook. The site is zoned R1 and is located on a non-alley lot. Next slide. The project proposed converting an existing portion of the residence, including an attached existing garage into an accessory dwelling unit. The proposal actually triggered a review process two modification request, which was subject to public notice due to the fact that it was requesting to convert the existing garage door into a secondary entrance facing the street. No public comments were received in opposition of the request. And the review process two did receive planning director approval. And as of the date of this meeting, construction permits have been issued. Next slide.
And for those who are following along in the staff memo on that, the restriction on two doors facing any side street is on page ten of thirteen under the design standards for attached ADUs. Excuse me again.
Yeah, so fifteen zero seven Rucker Avenue is in the historic overlay. It's owned R2, six thousand square foot lot. It, the, the historic overlay standards do apply. That's in chapter twenty-eight of title nineteen. Next slide. So the issue here was the proposed roof pitch is only three twelve. And I believe the height of the structure was nineteen feet. So this has been approved by the historic commission. They are allowed to do roof pitch deviation. So that's why this was able to be approved. The type, style and color of the siding trim roofing and windows generally match the existing house. And it is off the, behind the house where it really wasn't that visible from the street. So that's not the design. Unfortunately, I don't think we have elevations of the structure that'll be built. So the historic commission does involve the public and, and so there was notice involved with that modification of the roof pitch. Okay, next property. Next slide, Becky. Thank you. Nineteen oh six Hoyt. There's an existing duplex. There's an alley in the back. And in this case, it's UR three zone, a lot, looks like it's fifty-two hundred square feet. Next slide. And so the picture on the left is the existing duplex and on the right are the proposed plans. I believe it's approximately twenty-four feet or so, which meets the, the height limit in the UR three. The roof pitch also would meet our code. And it does, it is similar to the duplex in front. However, there is an issue with the setback. And this had to be denied because it does not meet the twenty-foot rear setback in the UR three zone. It's interesting that that in the single family zones, you can place these in the, the twenty-foot rear setback. But in this case, it's probably an oversight, and so we're not able to move forward with this and variance in this case wouldn't be doable because it wouldn't meet the, the four criteria for, for variance to be granted by the hearing examiner. Next slide. Twenty-four oh two Testnut. This is in R2 zone as an alley and it's a six thousand square foot lot. Next slide. In this case, was not able to move forward because the proposal is a five twelve roof pitch. I think there's some other things with this, so it's just maybe not a rough pitch issue that that's the reason why it hasn't moved forward. But it does, I, I don't know if we, I don't think we have a picture of the house. So this is another example of what a potential dadu off the alley could look like. Next slide. Okay. Becky, you'll take over? Or do you want me to go through this?
Here, I'll jump in here. So these are
Go ahead, go ahead.
These, these are just a, a list of potential code amendments that we identified. Some of these came right out of the rethink housing action plan, action related to accessory dwelling units. Some of these are, are issues that have come up in previous reviews of accessory dwelling unit applications. Some of them, you can see the reduced rear setback on UR three alley lots. That was from one of the examples a couple of slides ago where that twenty-foot rear setback was, was, was blocking the potential construction of an accessory dwelling unit. And some of these are, have been features in some of the proposals at the state level and in some of the other action plans. So these were just a list of about ten potential areas that we could look at. Yeah, I'll just go through them one by one. And then I think we can turn to the planning commission and see what question, actually, let's go for questions first, clarifying on any of the development regulations that we have on the books now or anything that we've gone through previously.
Any questions from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner again, again.
Is this a, is this a time for?
Uh, is this a, is this a time for any and all questions? Uh, you're, you're opening it up for?
I, I'd say go for it. You've got the floor.
Okay, um, my first question is about um where these um pre-approved uh models may be coming from? Where's the source um for these plans?
Yeah, well, we've been to a couple of presentations from the city of Renton. I think they had a competition where they uh they put out a call for proposals and then um architects, local architects submitted their suggestions that were reviewed by a panel of uh, a panel appointed by the city council, I believe it was. It was the same way in Los Angeles. So we don't have a particular proposal for that, but that is something that we've heard from uh, from several folks that are interested in lowering the barrier to entry for accessory dwelling units. Um, would probably take some city resources applied to it to facilitate that. Um, if I remember with one of these, there is um, you might have to license the copyright to the architectural design. There's some considerations around that, but it wouldn't take any actual change to our development regulations.
Okay, okay. Um, and the other, another question I had, um, I, I think that maybe some language might be added to um the description of the height limit. Um, just to state that um the ADA or the ADU height would not exceed the primary building height. Um, if, for example, the primary building is a single-story building in a residential zone, then twenty-four feet may be inappropriate um for that EDU height. Um, and then I had um some things to add to the design standards um portion um on page eight. Um, for an attached EDU, um, I would probably add some more specific language um about the appearance and character of the dwelling. Specifically siding, trim, uh roof design, window and door scale and design. Um, and adjacent architectural detail to match existing um for that attached EDU. Um, and then I think I would probably get more specific about the detached ADU um in terms of the roof pitch um rather than similar to, but matching uh the predominant roof pitch of the principal dwelling. Um, and in a complimentary uh design to that roof pitch. I also had questions about um on page nine. Um, talking about um the table eight dash six EDU standards. Um, in terms of the size, it wasn't completely clear to me whether um an existing building conversion in excess of the size allowable would then go through review process one. For example, an existing garage that was larger than allowable. Um, would they then, you know, have the leeway to proceed with that um under review process one? And that's um, then on page ten, I, I wondered if um, under the design standards, I might add specifically um architectural details, including building trim. Um, but not, not specifically just building trim, including other architectural details might be appropriate there. Um, I also wondered if um there might be incentives for uh designing for ADA accessibility. Um, perhaps an increase in allowable area or percent of lot coverage because those designs do tend to um inflate your, your footprints a little bit, allowing for turning radiuses. Um, I did not see anywhere um where explicitly says that a certificate of occupancy will be required. Um, I don't know if that needs to be called out. Um, I think that was it. I might unearth more notes as I flip through this again, but um I will pass the floor over to somebody else for now. Thank you.
I knew it was a good move to turn to the planning commission. I do have some uh comments or responses to that, but um, I could hold those until we have a couple more in the hopper here.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner McGinn. Commissioner Zalinski?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair Finch. Uh, I just have a question on the uh the level of ADU activity since the last uh code amendments. Um, we learned here in the report that we've had seventeen permits approved in the last year or so. And I'm wondering if that is a notable pickup in activity or if it's just a continuation of the level of activity we had before. Um, because if it is a significant pickup, then maybe we're on the right track with those amendments that we approved last year or a year and a half ago.
Steve, the right one to answer, I believe it did increase substantially since we allowed detached.
Right, um, so a few years ago, I uh evaluated whether um owners have been occupying one of the residents on their property. And um, I, if I recall correctly, there's about thirty since uh we've allowed ADUs. And uh it mo, there's mostly um compliance with all those except maybe for, for two, two of those uh properties. But we've had seventeen, I guess, in the last couple of years and, and before that, it's over many years, we only had thirty, if I recall correctly.
Thank you. I think that's, that's good information to have. Um, I would just add a little personal note here. My wife and I were probably in, among the first wave of people to do an ADU. We did one back, I don't remember the exact year, sometime in the uh second half of the nineteen nineties. We did an uh, uh, and the unit was a conversion within part of our house at that time. And the house was very well-suited to that kind of a conversion because it was built on a ravine, so it had a daylight basement, which were our kids' bedrooms when they were at home, but when, after they moved out of the house, it uh lent itself nicely to convert to an ADU. And uh, so I'm not sure whether it actually would meet accessibility requirements because you had to go down a exterior stairway to get to the door out there. Um, that was not a steep stairway, but I'm not sure how the accessibility requirements would, would have applied. I don't think they were applied at that time. But anyway, I, I just think that there's a lot of opportunities for ADUs. It's a good tool to accommodate additional population, to create some affordable housing without really impacting in an adverse way uh neighborhood character and single-family zones. So I'm a big supporter of ADUs.
Thank you, Commissioner Zalinski. Commissioner Yanisak?
Thank you, and I was gonna ask the same question that Commissioner Zalinski did. Um, and I echo his comments. I think um ADUs uh do provide a great uh potential solution to some of the, the needs for increased capacity. Um, and I think too then that that it would, it would, I would conclude it sounds like that something we're in the, uh, go, going in the right direction with it, with the uptick here in, in the um activity. I, I guess I'm wondering too, maybe just anecdotally, what are some of the barriers that might be existing still or that you're, that, that maybe Steve that you're seeing or in permitting at, at this point? I mean, if, if you could maybe identify top three, what would they, what might they be? Or can you say?
Yeah, uh, well, uh, the one example that we presented was the twenty-foot rear setback for, in the UR three zone. Uh, that, that's one. Uh, I think process where uh ones that we have to go through a review process two doesn't necessarily end in denial, but it does add additional time and, and cost for the applicant to, to go through. A third one, it, it's, it doesn't come off up often, but it's the parking requirement. And uh, uh, hearing from uh York today, it sounds like maybe we shouldn't be applying the um on-street parking. There, there's a modification process where we, uh, where the one space off, on, onsite, off-street parking um is required and that kind of um prevents some, some properties to, to have that ADU. But we do have that uh rev two process to deviate from that. I think it's a review process two. It might, it may be a review process one. But again, that's a modification that an applicant would need.
Yeah, okay. And I see that those three things are kind of on the list here. It would seem to me that that'd be a natural place to start. I mean, examining, you know, how significant, how important are those, you, you know, conditions and balancing that out? Uh, so that, that would indicate to me also, since they're on this list, that uh we're on the right track with, with looking in those. I guess I, one more kind of, maybe two-part question. Um, I guess, first of all, going back to the owner occupancy requirement, what is the policy reason behind that? Is there a, a reason that we have that currently and the resistance to change that?
As I understand it, from the debates that I've heard on this topic, the concern is absentee landlords uh and having two rental properties on one lot. Uh, now we have a lot of well, I don't know what a non-absentee landlord would be, but we have a lot of rental properties, whether they're apartments or houses or duplexes or everything in between. So it, it does seem a little bit unfair to single out an accessory dwelling unit uh and a house for being inappropriate to have both rentals when a duplex is a very similar situation and it is okay to have those as two rentals. So a general preference for supporting homeownership and a concern for um landlords that don't live there is what I've heard, uh, held up as concerns there. We had a comment, just to follow that thread just a little bit. Segregating ownership. I actually traded emails with uh, with uh Commissioner Lark uh earlier this week. He had a couple of questions that he wanted to bring up and one of those was interest in addressing segregated ownership. So being able to condo off one of the units, the accessory or the, well, from the principal unit is not something that's allowed in our current code. And that was uh, uh, an option to swing the pendulum the other way towards providing a little bit more in the way of homeownership opportunities. Um, I just wanted to put that out there. I'm not sure if we have that on this list.
Yeah, well, thank you. And I would have guessed that that was kind of the concern. I, I guess, in some ways, I wonder if that's just a um if that's a legitimate concern, if there is demonstrated to me, some way you could empirically show that that is in fact an issue or, or not. Um, do we, and Steve, do you know of these seventeen applications? How are people generally using these, these ADUs? Are they renting them to, to non-family members, using them for family purposes? Do we, do we know?
Um, no, I, I do not know. I think most of these have not been completed yet. There, there, there's maybe um, uh, one or two that have been finished. And so um, but yeah, it could be a wide range. I, I, I don't know though. I, I don't know. We, we could ask Kelsey if, if she has any ideas uh on what people might be using those units for? The, what type of families maybe?
Yeah, just in, I mean, general conversations, most of the units are relatively small. Um, so they're usually intended for more small-scale families, not, not really people with kids and things like that. Um, in conversations with various applicants, you know, they've typically mentioned either for, you know, a parent or an older relative um to live in the unit just because they are smaller. Um, but ultimately, we don't have any requirement aside from our owner occupancy provisions to actually have them provide who's living in the home. So we don't really have concrete data on that.
Yeah, I figured that would be a anecdotal. And I guess one other thing, coming back to these, um, the, the, the idea of a, a bait, a model-based or some pre-approved plans. Um, I assume that the, this cost savings to the person would just be in not having to hire a, an architect to design something new. And I guess I was also looking at the, the fees section of the, of the memo and talking about that the permit fees themselves didn't appear to me to be extremely, I guess, unreasonable or extremely high. But I imagine that in order to prepare all of the documents and all the materials needed to get a permit, that that can co, uh, consume probably considerable cost. So I, when we're looking at ways to waive certain fees or costs, I mean, it seems to me that's fairly lean about, you know, less than five thousand dollars there. And, and again, I don't know all that goes into that, but perhaps it, it would require maybe a deeper dive into looking at, you know, what it, what does a prospective builder maybe you need to provide in order to get a permit? And is there anything within that that can either be reduced, eliminated, you know, streamlined? Um, cause I'm sure the architect fee is just one of, of many things that would go into that. And that would probably, looking at, at, if to the extent we're looking at minim, reducing cost, excuse me, that that would be the place to kind of have to get the bigger, more significant, um, I guess, chunks that would actually maybe make a difference for, for people that were i, if it is a barrier. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Yanisak. Commissioner Ballard?
Thank you. A lot of my questions were, were answered, but I, I'm going back to the thirty ADUs that were previously approved in the seventeen. I, I know there's not a lot of time, but what about the neighbor community feedback? Was there, I know you said that there was no feedback or no comments on the one, but was that consistent throughout them?
Uh, in the past, uh, there was no um notice required to neighboring properties.
So it wouldn't
as an ADU. So that is, we're not allowed, uh, the detached accessory dwelling units were not allowed um back then. Um, so yeah, and no notice was not, uh, required, so we never got comments.
In the uh, in the rethink, and I apologize, I wasn't following, so if it's a, but uh, were these brought up publicly? Were these uh potential code amendments approved through that process and vetted at some level?
Um, then rejected?
I'm sorry?
You mean where they proposed and rejected and in rethink zoning?
No, I, I, my understanding, these are, okay, so these are in addition. I, you've made a comment regarding these in relationship to rethink the update? And were these things that were going to be proposed or were these proposed through rethink? And were they publicly discussed or is this completely separate and these are the first time these changes are being applied to that? Or
uh, have we, oh, that's, there's two rethinks. There's rethink.
Yeah.
Rethink, sorry.
Sorry, was that, was I clear or does that make sense, my question?
To everybody but me.
Were you referring to the rethink housing action plan or were you referring to the rethink zoning that changed the regs? Regulations?
I guess, maybe I misunderstood York when he was explaining it earlier. I thought the proposed amendments, possible amendment, amendments that you have out here. It made me think that these had already been discussed and publicly discussed at some point somewhere in the rethink process. That was my question.
And the answer is yes. This um, this uh action in the one point one um, in the housing action plan, these are all recommendations. So our next step is to take them through to implementation. So it was, these were discussed, but the action plan itself didn't So it was, these were discussed, but the action plan itself didn't make the changes.
Okay, I think I understand, I'm following. No other questions, just, I mean, in my personal opinion, I think it's a great tool for affordability in places that currently doesn't have it. So I think it helps with equity and getting affordable housing out into that communities that normally don't have it. And I would support less restrictions.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Ballard. Commissioner Chatters.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to echo what Commissioner Ballard just said about, in general, supporting fewer restrictions. I think this is a really great opportunity to expand our housing availability. Thank you to Commissioner Zaliski for asking the question about the impact of the 2020 adoption of the rethink zoning ordinance, because that was my main question. So thank you for that. But in general, I'm really intrigued by two aspects of this. One of them is the free model-based plans for streamlining permits. And the second is the allowing ownership segregation. And so you gave an example of a place where where the free model-based plans has been implemented. Do you have any examples of somewhere that the segregation, the ownership segregation piece has been implemented?
I don't know of any. I will, I, it's a, it's an idea that I only was rec, was suggested only recently. It had not occurred to me before, but that's something that I'd love to learn a little bit more about.
It is, it's permissible in Seattle.
Okay.
Interesting, thank you, I appreciate that, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Chatters. I had a few questions and comments. I agree with much of the discussion today about ADUs being a tool for affordability as well as aging in place. I thought that was a great comment. Commissioner McGinn, I do think that there are some additional options that we have in front of us to reduce the barriers to effective ADUs and DADUs. I also think it's important for us to remember that even if we were to double the capacity of the ADUs and DADUs that have been permitted in the last 15 months, we're still less than 1,000 units in the next 24 years. So this is not going to solve our affordability crisis or our need for accommodating increased population. This is, this is just one of the tools and likely one that we need to think about sensitively as it incorporates into our residential neighborhoods. I had a question about SB 6617 in the 2020 legislative session. This is about prohibiting cities from requiring off-street parking for ADUs within a quarter mile of frequent transit. I did not read the bill, admittedly, but I was curious, is there also a requirement for those transit providers to continue to provide that service if an ADU is built without a parking stall?
No, there is not, and that's actually the bill that Steve kind of alluded to when he said we may not be completely consistent with the requirements from that bill. So we do have a waiver for, if you're within a quarter mile with a safe walking path with at least two on-street parking spaces in front of your house. And there were two other criteria that go a little bit beyond what the state law holds you to. But you do raise a good point that if the transit service disappears in the future, then that alternative transportation method would no longer be there.
Yeah, I assume that was not included in the funding impacted that bill. The other thing I wanted to kind of walk through quickly is the potential code amendments. We've talked around them, but I'm happy to walk through my opinion on some of these. I think the owner occupancy requirement is probably not something that will be legal much longer, it seems. And so between enforcement and the legality, I'm not sure this is one that we need to spend a lot of time on. The pre-approved plans, I think that's a great idea, and it came up a lot in discussion in the rethink housing discussions. The lot restrictions, lot coverage restrictions, I think that's challenging because on large lots, it would be difficult to say that the setbacks alone should control the level of density on a lot. And so we need to think about how that might work relative to some of these larger lots. Waiving fees, again, I think the the goal here is to reduce barriers to getting these units built. But as it relates to to impact fees and usage fees, those are real. And if we're going to remove the owner occupancy requirement, I don't think we should make these rentals, higher-performing rentals for out-of-town landlords. So I think that those are a real cost to the city, and I don't think that the the taxpayer should bear that burden. We talked about parking. Again, owner segregation could work, and I think it could work well to providing affordable housing options. I think we just need to be careful about when a lot could be segregated as a unit lot subdivision, because we want to make sure that we don't end up with odd-shaped flag lots and micro lots in R1 and R2 zones. Reduce rear setbacks in the UR3 alley lots, that makes sense to me. Entrance provisions, I defer to staff on that. And then we've talked about the design requirements. I guess my philosophy on the design requirements is good design typically doesn't cost more money. And so I would advocate for holding line as relates to to good design in our neighborhoods. Any other commissioner comments?
Thank you, Commissioner Finch. I I echo what you've just said. I thought that was a really nice way to summarize this checklist. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more commissioners with hands up. Oh, Yorick, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to delve a little bit deeper into the consistent appearance doctrine. So we have a requirement in many zones, all zones, that the accessory units, Commissioner McGinn, you brought up the the need to keep the accessory unit smaller or clearly subservient to shorter, consistent design themes between the main unit and the other, the the principal unit and the accessory unit, especially detached. I think that is something has not necessarily been an obstacle to creating an accessory dwelling unit, although I think we have had some designs that had a really hard time getting to approval with that. But we've definitely had some situations, and maybe Stephen Kelsey can expand on that. We've definitely had some situations where that requirement in code has not seemed to be the most effective. So imagine a house, and so on many blocks, you have houses that were built in different eras and different styles side by side, and that's not a problem. And some people actually like the visual interest that that can bring to a neighborhood. So you're saying that a house side by side can look different from each other, and I'm not talking about historical historic neighborhoods here, I'm talking about the rest of the city. So why can a house side by side look different, but a house in front and behind cannot look different? We also have, could be in a situation where the house in front is one-story, but will turn into a two-story house in the future. And so you're limiting the two-story house in the back, maybe if it's even surrounded by two-story houses except for that one unit. And then there might be some houses that you don't want to match the the appearance of them. Maybe it's not a great-looking house, but they are proposing a great-looking accessory dwelling unit. And right now, I think it's waivable, so we we bring them through a modification process. We've also struggled with sometimes what consistent means. It's easy to look at the siding and say, this one is horizontal siding and that one is vertical siding. So that's clearly different. But what about the thickness of the slats? Or would it be the worst thing if one was brick and one was wood? Does that really detract from the neighborhood? I I guess I just want, and it doesn't have to be tonight, I think that's something that's worth a little bit more thought. And maybe if we have a little bit, I think there's talk of a design manual that the that the department can can promulgate, that's mentioned in code. That's not something that we have yet, something that we could put on our work program. Is there anything else on that? And then, I guess, changing architectural styles. There's pitched roofs and then shed roofs and flat roofs and things like that. Is there anything else around that, Steve or Kelsey, that you've seen in in past reviews where that architectural consistency requirement has led to some problems?
Yeah, I think you covered it really well. I guess there's also the scenario where you have a single-family residence in front, and then they want to build a garage on the first floor and then a ADU on on top, a detached accessory dwelling unit on top. So the height would would be higher than the the principal dwelling in front.
Yeah, that was actually the main example that I was thinking of, that particularly on non-alley lots, the way that the code is currently written, it it has a maximum height for non-alley daddies of 18 feet. And so that option of doing a unit above a garage right now on a non-alley lot is pretty much eliminated just based on those height provisions that are currently in place. So that itself is pretty restrictive. We've seen people come through and want to do that style. It's fairly common across jurisdictions to see that. But if you have a non-alley lot right now, it's basically impossible to do that.
Thank you. So just something to, something to think about, and I think there's a difference between good design. I remember one of those examples that we showed had an awfully big, awfully blank-looking wall, and that might have been a an early design, or that might have been something that we would have required some sort of modulation or or some lines in there or something. And so I think that we'd put in the bucket of requiring just quality design, porches and entrances and things like that. But the consistency thing, I think, is one that's tripped us up. So we can do a little bit more work on on explaining that for a future round of a similar type of discussion, but I just wanted to respond to that a little bit. And I love the idea from Commissioner McGinn on the incentives for accessibility, because I think there is a clear nexus with a, we do have a need for more accessible housing. And you're right, that it probably does take more space to pull it off. And so it's not just a bonus, but it is integral to the to the actual provision of that accessibility.
Agreed. Thank you, staff, and thank you, commissioners, for the discussion. Any additional commissioner comments?
Yes, I guess this is Commissioner LaVera. So I was sort of interested in the sort of contradictory nature of proposing owner segregation. When when we were talking about rethink zoning, it seemed like, if I remember correctly, any lot narrower than 50 feet was considered non-conforming. So that policy seemed to be pushing all housing lots toward larger lots. But if if you go to allowing segregation on these ADUs, that seems to sort of reverse that policy trend. And I just wondered, you know, if there would be a rethink about that lot size in general.
A rethinking of rethink. That is a very good point. You know, there's, one way to do it is condominium, which wouldn't be a fee simple actuals unit lot subdivision. But there, you know, if you have a, I don't know, what is the downside of having a a small or an irregular lot that has a dwelling unit on it that is functioning very well? It was built according to the code as we have it now, and then it was subsequently split off. You would not be able to build anything different than that in the future. If you wanted to rebuild it, you would have to meet some sort of a code. But if that, if there are problems with having small or funny-shaped lots with an accessory unit on it, then that could be held to just a condominium type of arrangement.
It, I guess it seems strange to me because there's so many small lots in North Everett, you know, that are not odd-shaped, but they're narrow.
Yeah. Something for us to look into, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner LaVera. I guess one final comment for me is, I believe that ADUs are allowed in R4 as well as in portions of Metro Everett. I guess I would say that, to the extent that any of the changes to the ADU requirements would put those properties in jeopardy of not being able to be developed to their highest and best potential, we might consider if we relax standards in the lower-density zones to either prohibit ADUs in the higher-density zones or just be very thoughtful about how those might get planned. Okay, well, with no more commissioner comments, we can open up to public comments. I see a number of folks have attended the meeting. I will call upon you. If your hand is raised, please use star six to mute or unmute your microphone. First is Leanne Rowe.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can hear you now, thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right, this is Leanne Rowe. My address is 6308 West McNolia Avenue, Everett, Washington. And I'm very sad that ADUs were ever existed in Everett or permitted or thought of. We have one that was put in our neighbor's backyard. So it is a detached auxiliary dwelling unit. Our situation is we are over a mile away west from Evergreen Way in a residential area that was developed in the early 1950s. So it was basically set up for the World War II military families that came back. And what was important was you have a house to live in and you have a backyard. Backyard was very important at that time. Everybody was wanting to do all kinds of activities in their backyard, very family-oriented. And this detached auxiliary dwelling unit that's back there now totally is out of character for our neighborhood. And if you want to take a look at it, you can look at Google Earth. It's at 6308 West Beach, and you can see it very clearly, this detached auxiliary dwelling unit, because it just, it's over the initial house that was there. I mean, it's it's just glaring. It's, but it's 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 more than just unattractive. I mean, this is not like a little playhouse. A lot of times, people have an idea an auxiliary dwelling unit is a playhouse. It's not a playhouse. It's a house. It has everything that a house has, including a sump pump. It is not small, it's two-story. It greatly affects our landscaping because it's stopping all the sunshine from reaching the plants, large and mature, you know, small and large, mature landscaping is affected. I was looking back there today, and we have two cedar trees that have always done well, been healthy, and now they're browning. See, we have behind us, there's a chain-linked fence, but not only do we have this two-story back there now, really, it's a house. So it's a two-story house that's back there, so two houses on one property. Behind that, in the 20-foot setback, they've placed a storage shed. And then on the chain-linked fence, which we used to have, you know, could see through and have air flowing through, they've put a tarp across that chain-linked fence, just kind of plastic tarp. For whatever reason, they put the plastic tarp, and it's affecting the landscaping. If we we had a good relationship with this family before, we've lived here 28 years, and they were here about 20 or so years. It was a husband, a wife, a son and daughter. So I knew them when the kids were little and when they were growing up. And as time went on, the son and daughter grew larger and older. And the son, when he was in his twenties, married a young girl who'd just turned 20. And they, and his, and the wife and husband, the husband had passed away, so now the wife is a widow. And they decided that the daughter, the new daughter-in-law, needed her own house. She's just 20, but she needs her own house. So they decided to build this daddoo in the backyard because she needs her own house. Well, this is Well, this is a permanent solution to a temporary problem, you know, in, you know, she's just out of high school. In ten years, when she's thirty, she's not going to want to live in somebody's, you know, her mother-in-law's backyard in a DADU, you know, eight hundred square foot house. But that's what they built and that's what we've got there, a permanent solution to a temporary problem. And, you know, as you're talking, you know, there is, you know, it, there is no way to control whether they all become rental unit complexes. There's just no way to control that, to say that the owner has to always live in one of the houses. That's very difficult to, to mandate. And so basically, eventually over time, those two buildings will become rental units and will be in a rental unit area as opposed to what the character of our neighborhood was, which is a neighborhood with backyards and activities and families. We will become a bunch of red rental units. And this is very distressing to us. The landscaping problem is a distress. The lack of character is a distress. And now we have parking problems because there's now two families there with all of their friends and there's business vehicles. And they're hardly set up to be able to handle one property with parking, let alone what they've got going on now. And if you take a look on Google Earth and you look on the other side of the street, that green car belongs to the mother. So, I mean, they're, they're parking all up and down the street.
Ms. Rowe, thank you for your testimony tonight. Uh, we have others that would like to speak. Would you mind, uh, trying to bring your comments to a conclusion?
Well, that was basically my conclusion, so I appreciate this time. And please do give this a lot of thought because our, the character of the neighborhood has been really put at odds and the landscaping is being damaged. And it's, uh, now I look out the backyard and I see the backside of a detached auxiliary dwelling unit. And it's, it's just, it's not a pleasant place to be living when you lived in one neighborhood and you never moved and yet somehow you're in some other neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Ismail Mohammed.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Ismail Mohammed, thirty-seven, thirty-one Colby Avenue. Uh, I am a developer here in Everett. My major interests are in North Everett. And I, I'm focused on, uh, the middle housing, mostly, uh, trying to get the fee simple or ownership housing. ADU and DADU is a excellent approach. Almost two years ago, I stood in front of the planning commission and I said the same thing, that there's a lot of buildable land that we have in Everett, which can be utilized for, similar to DADU and ADU, but we can also utilize them in the multifamily zoning too. I am very glad today to see that there are potential, uh, code amendments that needs to be done. Uh, and I'm glad that, uh, it is on the radar of the planning commission. Uh, my question is that by the time we address those code amendments, it will take cer- some amount of time. And by the time there is an implementation time that a person would come with a permit application, it will take another couple of years. So during this time, is there a interim solution to address these code amendments? Somehow we can address them. And one of them is basically, uh, how do we get from REV two to REV one? And from REV one to what, you know? Uh, a REV one takes almost three months. REV two takes almost six months to get. I would, I would say that if there is some kind of interim, uh, situation or process that we can come up with, if there is a possibility or not. The other, uh, thing which I would like to address is one of the things we can add to the, uh, design that we have been talking that to come up with a design that can be adopted or several designs, pre, like, pre-approved or kind of something that works in our neighborhood, uh, environment. I would also suggest that if city can come up with some kind of financing suggestion to, to, to the, to the existing owners, because existing owners have some equity in their houses. If the process is simple, if the, 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 the process to kind of come up with a design and even to put in a unit, ADU or a DADU, if it is simple enough, then more people would be able to tap into their own houses' equities and be able to build an additional unit into just in their backyard. It might be contrary to, uh, the person when just before me. But if there is a need and if somebody wants to do it, I think that would be something, a good support to the homeowners. Uh, I would add one more thing to the potential code amendments is unit lot subdivision process. We have an, we have a process right now for, uh, unit lot subdivision, which takes almost six months or it has to be a separate application, yes. And it goes through the REV two process. If we would like more ownership housing, then we might have to consider that process also. One of the commissioners also mentioned that we had seventeen ADU, ADU units approved in fifteen months. Even if we double it, we will be less than thousand units in what, twenty years. So we might need a goal, you know, how many units actually we would like to achieve in the five, ten, fifteen, twenty years? Uh, is our infrastructure is capable of, of handling? Public works needs to be part of this too, and the building also. And I would like to end that, I, I know I'm taking too much time, but, uh, how many, like seventeen units were approved? I would like to also, uh, review how many permits did we process in a year? And during COVID or how is our permitting process and how much time it takes? Would we be able to, if we get, we get hundred applications in a month, would we, as a city, be able to process all those applications? Uh, other than that, I have a very good time working with the staff, planning, building and public works and I always, uh, appreciate their support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. And next we have Dylan Sluter.
Uh, thank you. I'm Dylan Sluter. I'm Snohomish County Manager at the Master Builders Association. Uh, thank you to the planning commission for taking on this task with ADUs as well as Yorick and Becky and other staff members that are investing some time in this. Uh, ADUs are an important piece of addressing our housing crisis. Uh, obviously affordability is a, a key component of this. And a, a recent study from the Turner Center out of UC Berkeley, uh, stated that of the ADUs they looked into, fifty-eight percent were rented for below-market rates. Uh, and of the units they looked at, seventeen percent were rented to family or friends for free. I guess not even rented, just allowed to live for free. Um, and anecdotally, I am one of those people that have, when I first moved out here, I'm originally from Indiana and I moved out here a few years ago. I didn't have the opportunity to afford a home. I lived in an ADU when I first came out here. Um, and it's a great component for people who are younger like myself to get that opportunity to, to kind of get, um, you know, some skin in the game, their foot in the ground and, and build their way up. And I'm now, I'm still a renter, right? I'm renting a condo. I can't afford to buy a home and I work for the home building industry. Um, so it's an interesting dilemma that we have here. Uh, but this is far more affordable units and they give opportunity for folks to afford homes that they wouldn't likely have, such as, uh, like was mentioned earlier, a widow that needs to get, uh, a process that, to get some rental money. That would be a great process for them to, to supply a little bit extra money and allowing some flexibility, whether that's setbacks or parking or size, things of that nature. I think we support, uh, the reform and we look forward to the opportunity to continue to work with the city. One thing I would do want to note is, uh, the ability to condoize these have been an interesting homeownership opportunity that provides that affordability for homeownership, which I know, uh, the city is often seen as a struggle, uh, to get folks in homes that they can actually own and have some equity. Um, and I myself would like that opportunity. Uh, and so looking at this, I would just say this is a great opportunity. Uh, Seattle's done something similar. Uh, when they passed their ADU reform, I want to say they saw an eighty percent increase in, in ADUs being built. So the market will respond if the city does in fact get some positive ADU reform. Um, so I'm looking forward again to continue working with the city. Happy to answer any questions you may have, but I appreciate the work that you put in.
Thank you, Mr. Sluter. Any other public comments on this topic? Okay, hearing none. Uh, before I adjourn, I wanted to, uh, thank Commissioner Yanisak for two years of chairing this commission, um, with skill and grace, especially during a prolonged period of pandemic. So I really appreciate his leadership during the last two years. And I, I failed to thank him at the top of this meeting, which was my intent. So, uh, thank you, Commissioner Yanisak. And with that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.